Your way to your seats, we'll get started. Yeah, either or. Okay. All right, I've got, we'll call it 6:10. We're a few minutes behind, we ran a little long, but we will go ahead and get started. So, call to order 6:10 for the regular council session on tonight is the 13th, I'm sorry, the 12th, I don't know why I wanted to make it a day ahead. So, if I can get everybody to please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiances.
We're gonna start with prayer. Let's pray together. Dear God, I noticed in Psalm 3312, it says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, and that is why we come to you and pray. Lord, we want your blessing on our little community of MPR. As we work on the business of MPR tonight, I pray we may be wise, understanding of the issues at hand. May any jealousy or selfish ambition be removed from us. May we be peaceable, gentle, open to reason. May our decisions be impartial, and may our decisions be based on what is best for the city of MPR. In all sincerity, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen." Okay. Pledge allegiance to the, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Yee-haw!
All right, first up tonight is citizen comments. We did not have a, okay, well, I have to read my blurb. Take away my phone. You can, Denise, you can make your way up there, that's fine. This is opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion. Order addressed topics of interest with the presentation limited to three minutes. All speakers conduct themselves in an early and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking, and please announce your name and address for the minutes. State law prohibits a mayor as a member of city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in a dialogue without appropriate agenda intended, posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting laws.
My name is Denise Sibert, I live at 114 Great West Loop, and I wanted to thank my city council. I thank you all for hashing things out that are important, standing your ground, and being determined to do the best for this community, to be, do the best for Morgan's Points, accountability, and that you, well, resort accountability, and that you don't give up and don't back down when you know this has to happen. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the hours that you spend looking at things, and looking at the issues, and the details, and making sure everything accounts right. And then I want to say thank you to the fire department. This fire mitigation program, I had a yard across our community that was not in the best shape, and was pretty dangerous, and they came in, and they even had volunteers show up that day to help clear out the area and clean up the mess, and make it much better so we don't have to be in a panic about it anymore. And so, I thank the fire department and their excellent time of just cleaning that up, and especially the volunteers for their time that they gave us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And council, I don't, I don't want to steal Chief Sibley's thunder, but we do have the fuels mitigation update and presentation wrapped into his, his department head presentation this evening, so a lot of good stuff on that. Yes ma'am? I'm sorry, Donna, go ahead.
Donna Hartman, 112 Great West Loop. Ditto Denise, that was perfect. Everything that she said about the council's tenacity, and we're neighbors, so we got out there and watched this fuel mitigation go on, and they were, everybody was involved with that. I mean, we have police, and firemen, and utilities out there, and it was a real joint effort, and they did an awesome job. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So, I just have one little announcement. Santa Claus is coming to town! And it's the real Santa, just so you know that. So, it's going to be December 5th, which is always our date, the first Friday in December. It's gonna be at 6 o'clock down here at the event center, and this is truly a fabulous city event with lots of volunteers, which is how we do everything in this city. We have volunteers, heart and soul of our city, but we've got the police, we had a meeting today, and Schultz was there, Director Schultz, I guess can't call him chief anymore, and Chief Hodge, and Chief Sibley were there, and BJ, and Stephen, the whole, the whole gang was there, you know, trying to, trying to get this organized, and it's a wonderful event, and we asked y'all to come out. So, 6 o'clock here at the event center, Friday the 5th, be here. And you don't have to bring a child, I mean, it's, it's for everybody.
Good, 'cause I ain't got none. Mine are all gone, oh no, oh no. Anybody else, our residents wish to speak this evening? Nope, okay. All right, moving on then into the regular session agenda. So, the first thing on the agenda, the public hearings, which go hand in hand with the ordinances for the FY25 budgets and FY26 budget amendments. So, that was discussed in the workshop, and as my understanding is, council is going to table those. We are not going to conduct public hearings this evening, we will reschedule those at a later date when we do put the, the actual ordinances back on.
And I don't mind making a motion, just to make it official.
Yes, please.
Based on the discussion at the workshop, that I would like to make a motion to table FY25, FY21, FY25, FY22, and the public hearings related to them until a future meeting.
Okay, that was, Dorothy made that motion. Council, can I get a second?
I second.
Roxanne with a second. Council, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? 5-0. Okay, thank you, we shall move on. So, we have our presentations this evening, backed by popular demand, our department heads. I don't know if you guys drew straws, rock, paper, scissors on who gets to go first?
We have Mary first. Utilities will be first, Stephen. Public utilities.
Hello, everyone. So, we're gonna go over the wastewater treatment first. Total gallons treated was 726,873. All of our readings, so the BOD, the TSS, and the E coli were all, all under the maximum contaminant levels. We did do the lift station rehab, so that thing got new submersible pumps, rail system, control panels, crane, hatch, I mean, all of it's, all of it was replaced.
My understanding is that we had a pretty significant amount budgeted to do that?
I think there was 170,000 budgeted.
Were you able to step in?
We did it for under 50. To the water side, so we installed six new services, we replaced 34 meters, we did 35 water leak repairs, 13 boil water notices, 294 of the re-reads, 254 lock-offs, total work orders was 549, sprayed 50 gallons of herbicide, of course, we do our daily, weekly, monthly report, or sampling for TCQ. Total water consumption was 117,600,120. Oh, sorry. We did have some work done at our ground storage one. You guys should know some of the stuff that's, it's just getting old, needs to be replaced. So, we had the speed control sensor, and then the ground level storage sensor on the ground storage level, or ground storage tank replaced. Just an FYI, just to kind of get a bug in y'all's ear, we really need to start talking about water line replacement in this city.
I have a question, just from my, how, how big are our water lines?
It ranges from, I believe we have a 12-inch down to 2-inch. Anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, you didn't mention the generator, did you?
Oh, no, well, that was, sorry. Yeah, we had the, the wastewater generator was installed as well. So, that's a brand-new system.
And the money was originally budgeted in the, inappropriately in the water fund, since it was cost savings significant based off of Stephen's actions, we were able to keep it within the cost center of the sewer fund to get that thing replaced. So, it's, it's finished and up and running, so, good job.
I have a quick question before you go away. So, the consumption, just to give me a feel for magnitude of about 120 million gallons, is that for a year?
That was for the last two quarters. Yes.
So, we're at about 400,000 or 4 million, 100 million? 200 million, I'm sorry.
It was 117 million the last two quarters, last six months.
So, could you, can I ask, could you expand at all about the, what water line replacement?
I've been here for just over a year, and we've, we've done significant water leak repairs, and I'm not gonna, I can't say all the lines, but a lot of them, the roots in this city are insane. And so, it's hitting this thin wall pipe that was put back in the ground in the 70s or whenever, it's, it's old pipe. So, the, the more you put chemicals through it, it weakens that pipe over time, now you have roots coming in, shifting it, and it just, it destroys the pipe. The pipe just needs to be, it needs to be upgraded.
Is it, is it a PVC right now?
Yes, most of it is PVC, it's just old thin-wall PVC.
And I might add that there's grant funding available for us to help identify exactly what lines we have, where they're at, whether they're charged, and what have you. It's a state-funded program, they actually, we don't have to touch the money at all, they actually bid it out unless it changes, unless it's changed since then. It's the Texas Water Development Board, so I think that's the way to go for us, and also they'll look at all the records we have, and they'll help get us organized for future years. And it's like a hundred thousand dollar grant, and again, they handle everything, we just gotta apply for it, and we'll be doing that as well.
I was with the City of Rogers when I started the career, and it was kind of similar there too, they had a lot of just cast iron pipe, galvanized pipe, and they, they went through the water board to help with that as well, so it's something that we can do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And I think we're aware of that, I think Jesse told us that too, and he was trying to replace the pipe that he could, but he didn't, based on the water breaking, or the pipes breaking, so as he had to repair, he went in and replaced a lot that he could, but, you know, that's in the midst, and it's only putting out fires, it's not...
That's, it's, what I call in, in our industry, it's putting Band-Aids on bullet wounds.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Stephen, I think as a council, we would like to just all thank you for saving us money, and like, working hard to...
It's a joint effort, I've, I've got good guys that give me good suggestions too.
We really appreciate you.
We're grateful for that.
Yes, we really appreciate you.
BJ, are you making your way up? You are, looks like.
I have fire department.
Yeah, so, I, I know the FD's presentation is, like I said, it's combined with fuels mitigation, so that's...
Let me talk for Shane, I can, here, let me do this.
You're gonna, you're gonna square him away?
Yeah. Or the police department. So, mine's pretty short, I'm not gonna lie. Ours is still continuing with brush, herbicide pickup, which has gone way down, thank goodness. The mowing is slowing down, because we're getting into the winter month, so basically ours is daily work orders, and, and we're starting easement clearing, but I'll kind of let Shane, we did do that one over there on Great West Loop, it was a group effort, and it came out really, really well, so he'll, he'll have more of how we're going to clean those easements in his presentation. So, we're gonna work together, but you'll actually get to see the machine working and how we did it over there, so, that's pretty much, ours is pretty simple, mowing grass and picking up trees.
Never-ending job.
Counsel, any questions?
And I'm sure you do some work on roads.
A little bit, here and there.
Maybe that's called under the work order.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll have number, like, he had, I, my FunView stuff, it's our work orders, but Mary is working hard to get, for some reason on my side of work orders, I'm able to get in there and like, look at what we do every day in interim, so, but Mary's helping me get that fixed, so, next month, yeah, it's another, another issue with, but we're getting there.
Thank you, BJ, yeah.
Before he jumps in, Dorothy, I got, I just got a magic message that apparently your mic is either not functioning, or they can't hear you.
I don't think it's functioning, can you hear me now?
No, I don't, I don't hear anything.
Yeah, I couldn't hear myself.
Neil's more than happy to donate his to you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, for the voices from technology world, thank you for the update, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, there we go, it sounds like I can hear you now, so, okay. Go ahead, good sir, I'm sorry.
All right. So, with, with this title here, since we are a public safety department, we will finish out the year, most likely with the quarterly presentations, and then merge into something unified later. But, I'll be speaking on behalf of the police department for the second and third quarters of 2025, as you can see ahead of you, maybe not from way back here, but over here you can. We issued 227 warnings for quarter two, 156 warnings for quarter three, 114 citations for quarter two, 87 citations for quarter three. Again, those are not just moving violations, those are, you know, possession of drug paraphernalia, other citations, minor possession of alcohol, you know, minor consumption of alcohol, things like that, so they're just not including traffic violations. Those are also ordinance violations, and like, things like dogs at large, things like that. As far as arrests for quarter two and quarter three, we had 13 arrests total for quarter two, 10 of those were for offenses, three of those for warrants, quarter three, we had nine, and that was, six of those were for warrants, and three of those were for offenses. Speaking of incidents and offenses, for quarter two, we had 42 offenses that we took reports for, 15 incidents. Incidents are, you know, things like, just information only, not actually tied to an actual offense, death investigations, sometimes it's just other agencies as well, if it wasn't tied to an actual offense. And so, that's kind of where the incidents offenses separation comes into play. Offenses, or quarter three, we had 32 offense reports and 18 incident reports. As you can see, quarter two and quarter three, we had a little drop in non-paid reserve and volunteer hours there in quarter two, and then a significant increase there in quarter two and quarter three. It's kind of misleading, I'll tell you the reason why, we really weren't tracking our volunteer staff hours, so Becky is my volunteer public information officer, we really weren't tracking her hours before on the volunteer stat, and so, there's kind of misleading there, she's, she was working a lot there, so it might not be as much jump, but now we have a, a new program for timekeeping, and so, it's gonna help us a lot easier than manually tabulation like we're used to. So, kind of misleading there. As far as staffing goes, we actually ended the third quarter with nine full-time officers there. We do have two vacancies, so we're, we're at, right now, currently, and now that we're in the fourth quarter, we do have eight officers, full-time officers that we have, so we have two vacancies that we're looking to fill, but again, we ended the quarter with nine, nine full-time. We have one part-time, that's still the same, and we've got one reserve officer, that, that increased from zero to one. And then, of course, we still have one volunteer, which is Becky. And our response time, our response time has gone up just a little bit, and went, went up, we ended the quarter with just over five minutes, just under six minutes on response time to priority one, two, and three calls to put together. So, we'll be, again, looking at, my, my threshold that I like to keep is five minutes or under, and so, we'll be looking to make sure that, partially, we know the problem is, is that in the past, our agency, our department responded to all police, oh, sorry, all fire and EMS calls as well. Well, now that fire is staffed 24/7, that they will still dispatch the call to us, our officers won't necessarily respond right away, and so, that's throwing our numbers off, because the communication between the officer and dispatch is not, A, clear the call, they're not getting that understanding, clear the call, if they need us, we will come, and so, they're kind of lingering, stretching out our times a little bit, so, it's a communication process we're working on. That actually number is a little lower, it's just skewed a little bit by some communications. And as you see, our calls for service generally there at the bottom are steadily increasing for the year, as they always do, they increase, and as you can see the little trend line down at the bottom, the green trend line, I mean, we are still on the upward trajectory for the year. While we do have months there, that average is still on the upward trend. As far as crime prevention and patrol, we patrolled over 18,000 miles in quarter two and quarter three, individually in quarter two, and individually in quarter three. We performed over 300, in the upwards of 300 house watches in both quarters, again, individually in both quarters. We performed over 1,500 area checks individually in both quarters. And as far as security checks, we had a, a pretty significant increase there in security checks, but 625 in quarter two, and 1,109, sorry, 1,009 in quarter three.
And what, what drove that number?
Partly, calls for service generally probably contribute to that, and then, as we get into the, as we get into the, the winter times, and, you know, things start to slow down when the weather gets colder and things, you will see that number start to increase as well, partly because of that too, if the, instead of the officer just sitting there, you know, sitting on the side of the road, if he's not getting some, from traffic enforcement, what he's trying to do, generally, the officers that, that mainly would do security checks are at, at nighttime, because businesses are open, they might be doing those security checks as well during the day as well, so that kind of increase is depending on the activity during the day.
So, your Q3, that's Q3 calendar, so that's July, August, September?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the summer months?
Yes, yeah, and so, depending on activity, depending on the activity, if, if not a lot is going on, instead of them just sitting in their patrol car, you know, doing this, waiting for somebody to drive by, again, they will get out and go do those security checks where they normally would not.
Nothing unusual?
Yeah, nope. And like I said, as we get into the, as we get into the wintertime, you'll probably see they'll start to increase as well, again, because when people, when it starts to get cold, people like to stay home a lot more, so, we see a decline in traffic as well. People don't like to go out, they like to stay home, so you'll see a, a trend downward in traffic as well. And as far as animal services go, I'll give you a little bit of a thing, my Q3 numbers are a little off, we had some issues with our Excel spreadsheet, so they, these numbers are a little low, they're actually increased by probably closer to the Q2 numbers. But as far as dogs handled in Q2, we had 19, cats handled, we had two, and then other animals, you know, wild animals, or not classified as dog or cat, we had 19. In Q3, we had seven dogs, zero cats, and seven other animals, and again, that number's a little off, they most likely look like Q2, which is, our Excel spreadsheet was, was off. So, pretty much the same. And as far as dive team deployments, we went down in dive team deployment, which is good, something we always look to do. And we, in Q2, we had three dive team deployments, in Q3, we had two dive team deployments. Off the top of my head, since I don't narrow those down, I just include the tab, down in the bottom, one was, most of those were vehicle recoveries in Q2 and Q3, there was a body recovery in Q2, and I believe Q3 was, was just vehicle recoveries. Do you have any questions for me?
Matt, let's, also, don't forget that you'll be doing some PSAs on ordinances pertaining to animals.
Yes, yes.
Shots and what have you, so that should be coming forward along, we'll try to get them on a regular repeating notice, both through Facebook and...
Yeah, we're gonna try and, try and spruce it up and make some, you know, some good informational videos, and not just something that's stagnant, you know, graphic-wise, you know, try and spruce it up, make it more entertaining, maybe make it funny, you know, if we can get you to laugh, we're having a good day.
Can you give us a quick, quick, I mean, you know, off the top of your head, how is the combo of fire and police going from your vantage point, from the director's level? How, how are things working?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going great, morale is, I wouldn't say through the roof, you know, because we really don't know where that, that is, because, but morale is, is up, and it's still continuing to trend upward, it's not in a plateau state or anything, so it's continuing to trend upward. Again, you'll see some of the photos from, from Shane's presentation, I mean, again, we've already, I mean, we already have cross-trained personnel, which was, you know, Officer Gaines Myers was, you know, in her volunteer status as, as a wildland firefighter, helping with the fuels mitigation project, and you'll see some pictures probably of her in there as well. And then, myself, and Chief Hodge, and Sergeant Newsom are all enrolled in the online wildfires mitigation, oh, sorry, not wildfires mitigation, Wildland Firefighters Course, and are in the process of taking that, so by the end of this month, we'll hopefully have those certifications as well, and we'll be pushing those out to that, because, I mean, that's the first part for us, is, you know, is, again, I mean, not too long ago, myself and Sergeant Newsom were, were, were helping Shane do basically a wildfire, you know, with, with BJ as well. So, again, all hands on deck, so, but it's going great.
Training started, other things are moving along.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, Shane's in his office, and, and we're getting feedback that the office looks great, you know, a community member came by and said, "The office looks amazing, his office looks amazing," and, I mean, we're doing great stuff.
Happy cameras, all right, I like it.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay, FD, Chief Sibley.
Is this saving the best for last?
Well, it's the longest, because it's got all the stuff from, from the, from the fuels as well, so...
All right, good afternoon, everybody. A little technology. I just, all right, so, I did mine very cut and dry, just wanted to hit a few key points. For quarter three, July, August, September, we had 171 calls, broke that down by priority, 27% priority one, 34% were priority two, and 39% were priority three, so that's good. Lower priority means not as many very, very bad things are happening, so we always like that. As always, call type, 78% of those were emergency medical, some warm. We had 7% fire, and then 15% were either rescue, public assist, hazmat, something along that line, just a miscellaneous that is not our core. So, full five time, or full, five full-time staff members, 18 volunteers for the quarter, staff pulled in 3,212 hours, volunteers pulled in 864 hours, that was, it was a very busy quarter, as I say, training, 554 hours between career and volunteer. So, as you can see, we do a lot of training, making sure we're staying proficient, making sure everyone is at their very best when that call comes in. Questions?
I was wondering about your response time, it's always been really good, I was wondering if number one, you could include it in the future?
Yeah, I absolutely will.
Okay, and then number two, well, how's it going?
I mean, we joked the other day at one of the staff meetings, and I said, "It's going great." My staff's very happy, they've been performing above and beyond expectations, nothing but positive attitudes that I've seen, and I try to have a sit-down every day with whoever I try to have a sit-down every day with whoever I have on shift and just talk to them, "How's it going? How's work? How's your outside life? Is there anything I can do, anything the city can do?" Try to make it as comfortable as possible. Same with volunteers. I, I make every training, I try to make every event that we have, I want them to know that I'm there, that they can come to me, that anything they need, I'm right there. Just try to make, make sure that they know that nothing needs to go by unnoticed. It's been, it's been great. Collaboration between police, Public Works, utilities, City Hall, it's been amazing. We've all been side by side, working very hard together, so, I'll say that.
Okay, great. So how are your response times?
So I believe we are about a six-minute response time. Now, for us, it is a little bit more difficult because of our county response. That obviously adds an additional amount of time. If we get a major incident, we had to go to Salado, everyone saw that on the news, they had that huge. Of course, we did our due diligence, made sure our city was covered and protected, we were able to send one apparatus with a crew on it. That kind of delayed time impacts our response time. So it's kind of hard to give an exact response time for in-city versus county, just the way that the comm center, yeah, the way that the comm center sends us our, our statistics, it's, it's just priority one calls was this amount of time, and something like that is a priority one call. 10, 15% maybe? I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah. But I mean, we also have, the other aspect of it is, our primary response area over in Woodland Trails and down by Temple Park, those are technically county, but that is our primary response area. So it's, it's kind of hard to give an exact amount.
Shane, have you thought about maybe getting with BCC? Because it's really important to see NPR proper as it relates to the district you all respond to. They might be able to give you, it's all coding, is all it is, and that way you can separate the two, because both are important. But I think it might be tethered, that's a little bit something that's missing, that BCC might be able to help with.
Yeah, I'm supposed to have a meeting with Aubrey, who's over at the comm center.
Just a second.
Yeah, we've been, really, in the last few months, it's been trying to get all of our ducks in a rope, per se, making sure all of our licenses are changed over. We just had to renew our TCFP, we're in the middle of renewing our, our dishes for our EMS license. So this last few months, we've been really focusing on making sure we are by the book and reaching out to these different organizations to try to get a new report set up.
And it might, if you do come up with some new criteria like that, or some changes, make them effective one January 1st. And they should be able to search that way anyway, but just in case, it gives them time to do the training in-house, make sure by...
I'll get with Director Schutze, he's got an in with the comm center. So we'll, again, we'll work collaboratively, and that way, in the future, we can give a more in-depth...
Yeah, Shane, if I can, real quick. Sam, to answer your question, kind of just by no means, you know, qualified or quantified numbers, but I just pulled up our active so far, went back to the first of the year. We've run about 25 calls for the fire department, and six of those, so about a quarter, 25% had been Moffitt, you know, Assistant Sparta or whoever, so.
Month?
For this month, just since the first of the month, yeah, yeah, so about 25%. Can protect. It can, yeah.
But like you said, that's our, kind of, we're responsible for that area.
So while he's getting set up, we had a really good video set up, and it was all linked together, and of course, technology didn't want to work. Today, I threw together a quick little PowerPoint with a quick little before video, some information from that day, and just some miscellaneous pictures, so y'all can kind of see, and then some in photos.
You can throw me under the bus on that, it was mine. I couldn't, I couldn't get, I hadn't, you know, it works great on my computer, and every time I tried to finalize the video clip, and, yeah, it said no.
Nope.
Yeah.
What were talking about?
You know, Larry, I actually told them while they're pulling up, I told them what they needed to do was have Noel and the crew come in here to brief us in, like, full wildland gear, dragging chainsaws and crank them up, and, you know, a hands-on demonstration.
That could be dangerous.
Not for me. Want to be back here.
It's a large presentation, so it's a, it takes a little bit.
It's worth it. We're looking forward to it.
While this is loading, we are currently in the process of setting up a MOU with the Texas Forestry Service. Right now, they will come, once this is set up, they will come to us, and once we have this set up, they'll create a whole little work thing. Nothing out of our pocket, nothing out of the city's pocket. It's resource that they come in, they are subject matter experts, they come help us. We set out, hey, this is, we got project A through Z, and we're looking to get this done this year. And they'll say, "Okay." And then they'll come in, they'll work side by side with us. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an invaluable resource. So we are in the...
What did you say, MAU?
MOU.
MOU, what does that stand for?
Memorandum.
I'm sorry? Oh, memorandum, okay, yeah, okay.
It will either be that or in a local agreement, because it's another government agency, so it'll probably be more along the ILA side of the House. But we'll see what they can give us.
No, sir.
Yes, please.
So DNR is, for those that don't know, it's a do not resuscitate. A couple of things have to happen is, when we show up, in the event that there's been a cardiac arrest of some sort, it has to be present when we show up. Because if we show up and you say, "I have a DNR," we have to be able to prove that, otherwise, we have an obligation to begin resuscitation efforts. Now, if you...
Saying the document?
The document needs to be present, yes. And it has to be signed, and it has to, everything has to be filled out properly. We have to have, we have to, you... It has to be, it needs to be an out-of-hospital DNR. There is two different kinds.
That's good to know.
So... And honestly, what I, what I have seen a lot of the times is, for those types of patients, most time, they are bed-bound, and it is, they have it stuck to that, right above the headboard, that way it's...
Larry, one of the, kind of keeping in this, Shane, I don't know, maybe just the videos, the before and after videos will open on their own while this thing is fighting us, but we ran a call, address redacted, patient redacted, and it was one of the most efficient households that I've been to. There were several members of the family that had, when we went in on the nightstand, but essentially like a bookcase, as soon as we went in, each of the family members had a folder. And we'd simply pulled a folder on the individual that we were running the call on, and it had everything right there, all their doctors, their medications, their history, and I was like, this is, this is fantastic. I mean, it's... I don't know, to be honest with you. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. But, you know, for me, speaking for me, being a basket case with so many medications and everything, I mean, that's, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
So, did get some of the videos to pull up. This is a quick before, just to kind of give you a visual on what it looked like when we got there. We used our drone to fly this. While this is playing, this is a quarter of an acre lot. So just to kind of give this in perspective of the size. It's an easement. This is an easement, yes. Got the, our new chipper right there. Chip on site. Yep, and that's the skid steer that you can see the top half of, it's got a mulcher attachment to it, fantastic piece of machinery. Just want to get the other one pulled up. So on this day, we had four members from Public Works, they were there, they were operating our heavy machinery. That's the chipper, the skid steer with mulcher on it. Fire had... Hey, here's the... The numbers I needed. All right, so Tuesday, November 4th, area, if y'all want to drive by and see, it's Great West Loop between Blackjack Circle and Holly Court. When we started the day, it was 60 degrees, so it was a nice morning. We had 13 personnel on scene or on location. Again, Public Works was there with four people, they were operating our heavy equipment. Fire Rescue had eight people, five of which have gone and got a specialized chainsaw, chainsaw operator's training. We had Texas Forestry Service stop by, just someone we know, just to do a quick consult and try to provide some education, information, recommendations. So, equipment used, we had three chainsaws, the chipper, the skid steer. So, so these are just, this is some of the ways that we were having to operate. So this is one of our members, or two of our members dragging, just having to hand drag pieces out, wood chipper, using hand tools to try to clear out as much as we can. And what we were doing was, with these heavy equipment machinery, that is their area. We're gonna let them, they know what they're doing. Yeah, we all went to the same training, so we can work together, but it's a lot easier. He, we have an agreement, "Hey, you guys, this is y'all's equipment, we can help you, but y'all know what y'all are doing." So what we were doing is, when we brought it all out, we'd bring it about 10 feet from the chipper, make a pile. Public Works, their members would then take it from that pile and feed it in there. So, again, just taking small pieces, trying to make it manageable, running chainsaws, trying to quarter up. The skid steer was amazing. Only issue is, it can only go where it can get to, which is something that we've identified that we are going to have an issue with. But, I mean, that's just a few, I want to say, five people from fire that were there out of the eight volunteering. They were there volunteering their time at 8:00 in the morning. I mean, it can, it, yeah, it can cause some damage. Yeah, so, so I am going to get to that. If you, it's all right, I'm gonna go through this just to show you, but I am going to get to how we're going to handle these different types of easements, how we're flagging these easements. So this is just the beginning picture, if you watch this whole tree, you can just kind of see, as I go down these images, how that skid steer with that mulcher is just, it is destroying, so, I mean, into nothing. It's a, it's a amazing piece of equipment.
Get out of the way.
Yeah. So, right here, once we were done, you can see to the right, off that quarter acre, that's how it looks. So the little area circled, that is one tree that we didn't get to. So, little before picture, very thick stuff, dead stuff, stuff leaning, a whole bunch of ground debris. Our end picture, I mean, well cleared. And one thing, one thing we did is, with the chips, we tried to spread them out. We want to, we want to make sure that they're spread out, so it's evenly dispersed. And then 37 hours combined of personnel labor, just for that quarter acre. And there was one tree that we did not even make it to, and I will tell you, everyone at the end of that was, was pretty worn for that amount of work. And I mean, at the end of it, it only got to 75 degrees. That's still very comfortable and cool. Collaborative effort is a understatement. Public Works, code enforcement helping us identify where these easements are and property lines, and it's been huge. Police came by to check on us, stayed in the area, made sure traffic was acting appropriate, which, again, you saw, everyone had a high-vis, either jacket or vest on. It gets dangerous out there, so, and then, I don't see where our utility structure went. He, he came out, was kind of getting eyes on, kind of seeing what we're doing, just to get an understanding. So when I say it was a collaborative effort, that's, that's as much of an understatement as I could say. Everyone did a great job, super proud of everyone that was out there. We worked great together, safety first, no one got hurt, which is, that's the game plan every single day. So can't speak enough, but yeah, quarter acre for that, I mean, 37 hours. but yeah, quarter acre for that, I mean, 37 hours of labor, that's, that was a lot of hard work. So, back to your question, how are we identifying this? So, we're doing a three-phase. If it's green, it's good. So that means that we can get in there with the skid steer pickup trucks, we can back the Mulcher in, the shredder. Cool. Yellow, we can get in there, we're gonna have to kind of walk our way in, but it's still manageable. And then, we got our red areas. These are the ones that we're gonna have to cut our way in, cut our way out, get permission to go through people's property potentially. That's the ones that are gonna be a little bit more difficult. And again, this MOU or agreement, that if we can get this squared away with the Texas Forestry Service, I mean, we have an office in McGregor, we have a guy that lives local, he's very active with our department, he's already said that when they're not fighting fires, they need stuff to work on to stay proficient. And right now, they are out by Steel House doing recleaning because they need that training, they need to keep their guys busy, they need to stay proficient. It's real wor, real world to what they do at actual incidents. So, it's the best thing they can do to stay active. So, we're actively working on that. I mean, right now, it's, yeah. And that's, that's the part of it. Right now, we've spent a large amount of time just identifying what areas are our responsibility, city owned lots, easements, and then trying to identify accessibility. We've got 48 by 36 maps that we're marking on. We're driving around, we're looking at areas, hey, this is a high, high traffic area, this is what areas are concerned for evacuation, for accessibility. And we're putting a lot of time into the planning part of this, because we want to make sure that we're doing this in a safe, proficient manner. And we want to make sure that when we go out, we have a solid plan. I can't give you an estimated hours, I would say collaboratively a week, just on the fuel mitigation side. I can't speak for BJ's department, but for the fire department, we're spending 30 plus hours, 40 hours a week between the staff, trying to make sure that we have what we need and that we've got a good plan and that everyone's got the training they need and the personal protective equipment that they need and that are, yeah, it is. And that's, it will.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and that's why we are, we're working so hard to get this MOU with the Forest Service, because that's free labor. Who doesn't love that? And they bring their own toys. So they'll come with their salves and, yeah.
So, would we have to reimburse them for like?
Nope, nope, nope. So, and that's the nice part about it, is we set this up, they come out, we make a plan with them, they can fill out paperwork that it pretty much sets them up as, hey, this is your, your task, or your, your work for this timeframe, and it's funded for them. I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity. That's the first thing I asked. I said, so what's this gonna cost us? And they said, some administrative hours and some paperwork and some ink. I said, okay, we can work with that.
I mean, I know it. Oh, Shane, if I can, so Noel, our fuels mitigation guy, he and I sat down and the map that he's talking about, what we did is we went to SitCog, we asked them to reproduce a map of our city with our fire department boxes overlaid on it, because essentially that's how we're breaking it down. And then, with BelCad data on there, that is when, quite frankly, my eyes were opened, because we started going through and highlighting all the easements. Yeah, Noel is working to essentially, essentially get a, almost a linear foot, like we have, you know, eight miles of easements. Now, of course, that won't include the, you know, the larger chunk lots. I don't, I don't think there's really any good way to measure it, other than just, and, you know, I'll try to make sure that we get the map up here for council to look at as well, and post it for our residents. But it's, it's, it is quite the undertaking. So.
I'm glad we've started.
Yeah, and Forestry Service is the one that actually helped us map that quarter acre. They've got some fantastic software that they were able to line it out, and there's a 22, 5 acres. Okay. I was like, I thought, I was like, that was a huge, huge undertaking. It had to be at least an acre and a half. Nope.
Sure felt bigger.
It did.
For all of it. So if you, and then at some point, all the easements were deeded, the green easements were deeded to the city. So the city owns them. But, you know, if you were to sell it to someone, well then it's going to be a mess, still according to, or by that public easement. So they're not gonna be able to fence it, or gonna be able to keep people from using it. And I think that might, certainly, yeah, it's not gonna be a good selling point. But you can't get rid of those public easements.
There's one thing I was gonna also mention, you know, I guess it was last meeting, the meeting before, we talked about an excavator for BJ's shop, for Public Works to use with a, with a thumb, a smaller one, much more maneuverable. And we talked to the mayor with, and he's talked, I believe, to the association, and you've all said to go ahead and explore it. So we are continuing to do that. It is a, it will never go away, as long as trees grow in this community, because that's gonna continue to be an issue. That said, getting good equipment, the Bandit, what's it, the chipper is, I guess, super good, from what I'm hearing from everybody.
That's great.
Yeah. And, and so what we were looking at, of course, the skid steer and it's the tree grinder and all, super good. That excavator would be one more of a force multiplier to move things along faster. But it won't, it won't change some of the basic things that have to be done, but it can certainly help, just like this other equipment has been. We're not there yet. Once we get a solid number, talk to the association, make sure they can do it, and we can come for you and get some guidance from you all, that will be the, the time to make the decision. But I think it's gonna have to be even looked at in the future. Where do you want to spend the dollars, instead of maybe you could add a body, or maybe you can have a couple of part times during the peak season, instead of having more staff, just have them be a force multiplier to this debris removal program. There's different things like that you might want to consider. But, so we are thinking about it never to end. But we have to get it moving faster than it is. And in addition to all this, Mike, Mike has sent out letters to residents and some of the property owners, if you will, and some of them are actually cleaning up their property, not everybody. Okay, so, I think collectively, the enterprise wide is working with the community, and we can get the right kind of equipment and get it activated and be ready to force up the staffing when we can, and just keep moving. There should, it's just never gonna go away. So let's get what we can while the getting's good.
Right now, we have solely looked at our firefighters, just training wise, and then also the liability. There, our volunteers are on the city insurance and are covered. That's something I would have to, I'd have to speak with.
Add the mic. That's fantastic. I really.
Thank you, Shane.
Yeah.
I have one question. I don't know if you can answer that, or somebody else here, but on these easements, if the homeowner lives right next to the easement, are they allowed to go in and just clean up dead debris and stuff, or is that not allowed? Or what's the rules on that? Because I think that's been confusing for a long time.
Honestly, Mr. Potts, that's a, that's a legal.
A lot of people do.
So, they can go in at their own risk. There's nothing that the city has on, as far as rules or regulations, that says you cannot clean up your own easement?
No, what's?
That's why I was trying to clarify.
Is there liability behind, that'd be?
So I'm gonna repeat that.
For their own homes and their lives' safety. They're doing it for, you know, self.
I know you had asked me that before, and I, my answer was gonna say, hey, I, I can't give that, that's the liability on the city. So, yeah.
And the other thing to think about is the power lines and stuff like that. There's things in there that they may be able to cut down a tree, but ended up falling on a line and ended up sparking something. Now we've got another issue to contend with. So there's lots of reasons.
Okay, council, anything else? Thanks, Chief. All right, let's see, a couple of business items we need to wrap up. Next up is the consent agenda, minutes 25 oh 26, which are the minutes from the regular council meeting on 14 October 2025. Council, I will accept a motion to approve those. Okay, Sam, a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
I'll second. I reviewed them and made changes, and then Mary and I worked together to get them in the packet.
Okay.
I've definitely looked at them.
Okay, I got a first and a second with Dorothy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five nil. Okay, next up is ordinance 25 oh 23. This is deals with Chapter 3 building regulations that was discussed during the workshop. And the notes I have is that the intent was to discuss tabling that, and the city manager brought up a potential routing slip, as well as scheduling a workshop in the future to, to, to focus primarily on Chapter 3. So.
Maybe early December. So not kicking the can down the road, but possibly early December having a workshop.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to table that, if that's what council chooses to do. Okay, motion was made by Bruce. Council, I have a second.
A second.
Roxanne with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Five nil on that one. So, yes, Dennis, if we can look at early December for, to bring that back into a workshop, with that being the workshop, please. Sorry. Yes, yes. Okay, resolutions. 25 oh 37 was appointing members of P&amp;Z, and again, that was discussed during the workshop. There was a scheduling crisscross. So essentially, P&amp;Z is not ready to, they, they meet tomorrow, so they are not ready to bring their, their member recommendations to us. Council discussed also tabling that until they do so. So council, I will entertain a motion to table 25 oh 37.
Can I say though, that Ken, I mean, whenever you're ready and have it ready for council, I bet we could slip it in to one of our special sessions or workshops that are upcoming in the next few weeks, and that way everybody's legal and, okay.
Yeah, yeah, don't feel like you have to wait. You guys are taking care of business tomorrow, so.
Yep.
Just make sure you give us three full working days. Or more. Yeah, or more, so.
Well, if you got it Friday, we'll take it Friday, right?
Okay, so yeah, council, I'm gonna get a motion to table 25 oh 37.
I moved to table.
Okay, got a motion to table Roxanne. Can I get a second? Bruce with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Five nil on that one as well. Okay, 25 oh 38, we discussed, consider resolution to approve name, place, designation for Morgan's Point, not Morgan's Point Resort. So Dennis, you want to cover that briefly, and then we'll move in?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, this is as we discussed in the workshop, just resolution authorizing the use of Morgan, well, the release, the name, place, designation of Morgan's Point that was included years ago, and to a city that would like to use that name for their city, which is Morgan's Point, Texas. By your approval, the letter associated with that is also in your packet, that will allow that release to go through, made it through legal, and just looking for your approval to release that name, place designation.
Okay, council, I'll accept a motion to adopt 25, Resolution 25 oh 38 with the accompanying letter.
I, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 25 oh 38 to place the name designation of Morgan's Point to the city of Morgan's Point, Texas, down in the south, and the accompanying letter that is defined by, designed by the mayor, city manager, excuse me.
I will second it.
And Roxanne with a primary, Steven with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five nil on that one. And lastly, Resolution 25 oh 39, which is a resolution to adopt the investment policy. That was also discussed during the workshop. And council, my understanding is, we have some feedback to provide to staff. Staff has provided us some as well, and the intent is to table that currently. So unless I'm mistaken, I'll accept a motion to table that, or to approve it.
I'll make a motion to table it, come back and maybe with some different provisions in it.
Okay, got a motion on Dorothy to table that. Can I get a second? Sam with a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, five nil on that one. So, yeah, council, just, you know, the standard due diligence, take a look at that. If you do have anything specific that you want addressed, or are there any concerns, make sure that gets to the city manager, so we can get that published, corrected and published. So, okay, finance director updates.
Good evening, everyone. No PowerPoint today, sorry. But you do have a packet of right now what the bank currently shows. You do have the revenue and, the revenue and expenditure report as of the end of October. I do want to let you know, and just by chance, I know that Dorothy wasn't in the office when we were going through the FundView accounts. This is, is, it's running correct, but there's still some errors because some of the glitches of the InCode programming, when they brought over some of the accounts from InCode into FundView, when they did the conversion, they had to go back and merge accounts and do some programming edits. And so some of the accounts were, were no, were not active, and they were inactive. So this is so far what we have. I can tell you that payroll that we ran is correct on this one, but the initial payroll was not. So we're working, we're gonna have to go back and make corrections, because some of the accounts just flat out didn't show up, and so they weren't hitting. But they've correct, they've corrected it, and when I ran the second payroll, it did run correct. So, you have this account. I do want to give you an update. Some of you know, we did have the auditors here on site on Monday. It was a long day, but it was a very good day. It was a very, very long day on Monday. And I want to thank, we had, JoJo came in over the weekend. And I want to thank, we had, JoJo came in over the weekend to also help us prepare for the audit. I want to thank again the directors because we have turned in everything that they've requested, we submitted. And of course, as you know, they're going to come back with follow-ups and things like that. In fact, we've had emails all day today going back and forth, getting information to them for the audit. 2324 should be ready by January, the latest. Or hopefully, cross your fingers, waiting for December. One of the things that did come out of the conversations with the audits that will be an additional cost that was not budgeted for was possibly having to have a single audit for 2324.
Audit on...
Because of the combination of what was left from the, what we got from FEMA plus what we got that was not spent from the COVID money.
We don't know if it's going to meet the threshold that's required. It's, the federal law requires the expenditures of federal awards to be recognized, not so much that you got it, but the expenditure side of the house. And that's why it's called Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And we're still having that discussion on, did we hit that threshold? If we didn't, then there's not a requirement.
What's the threshold?
What?
What is?
Seven fifty then, I think it's a million now. But it was seven fifty at the time.
Just for FEMA?
Seven hundred fifty thousand. No, any of federal awards, doesn't matter what it is. If it's federal awards, that's to include pass-through financing. Good question. We had a discussion was like, what about the sidewalk? We're getting ready to let.
Right.
And they said, well, good question. They're, they said we'll refer to the state. I asked that question months ago and the parties could not answer that question. We're prepared, we're going to be ready to do a pass-through financing, excuse me, a single audit just in case. But I don't know where the state's going to be in that because we're not touching the money. We're responsible, but they're not, we're not physically touching it. So that said, we are still, quote, the owners. So that still hasn't been resolved. But if we are required to, because of this ground storage tank and any other federal use of funds, use of funds, then that will, that triggers it over seven fifty, seven fifty or above, we'll have to deal with that.
I thought we already did the special audit on the groundwater storage.
We did for that fiscal year, remember? Any fiscal year you're in, that's required by the...
Didn't we receive the whole amount in one year?
Doesn't matter when you...
It's when it's spent.
It's when it's spent. It's called a Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And that's that.
Okay.
When you hear them say Sifa, that's what they're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, so it would be on groundwater storage and then...
Part of FEMA.
Yeah, and so FEMA was really, expenditure started in '24.
But yeah, the debris.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, even though it's not a, it's reimbursement, it's also considered, because it, yeah, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
So we don't know yet for sure. We don't know for sure. I'm just letting you know what would be coming down the pipe, which was not expected, but nothing here is quite well going as expected, that's for sure. So anything that comes our way, we're going to deal with it. But again, it's going to be, if that happens, it's going to be, you know, more time. And I just, what we did talk to the auditors about is because we do have that March deadline for the '24, '25 audit to be done. So when that was a possibility, I started to almost break out instantly because I'm like, oh, my gosh, another audit on top of the other audit? So I didn't, I didn't know about this one. But they said that we could, they would do the audit, that this is the plan. And the reason I share this is because we have that deadline. And we're going to try our best to finish with '23, '24, start '24, '25. And then since the information that we need for to start '24, '25 doesn't necessitate or require them to finish the audit, the single audit for '23, '24, that may come back later, the '23, '24 single audit, just so that you have it in perspective. Because they're looking at expenses and revenues and the whole thing for '23, '24. But then the actual single audit is not going to delay them starting the '24, '25 audit.
Okay, yeah, just let us know.
Okay, just so you know. I just, because if we come back and we say, okay, it's, yes.
It might be worthwhile. If I'm not mistaken, again, this is based on memory. I think there's like an eight-month period beyond for single audits. It's not that it's a...
Right.
I don't know that exact number. But I do know that like the state of Texas has a provision that if they're not done with, maybe it's nine months. Either way, there's a timeline that they're looking for. The whole idea is they couldn't do the single audit till they get the regular audit done.
Yeah.
And then, and to slow down that three months, we can still, we can slow that last little reporting if we had to. And we can always let the governor's office, they've been very cooperative with us. We can let them know what our plan is. So that way, if you don't mind, just get with me later. And we'll make sure they're okay with that in advance so that there's no surprises. They were very accommodating to the city of Morgan's Point Resort.
NPR.
They have been very accommodating with us because they could have made our life miserable on anything, whether it's federal funds or whatever, you just wouldn't get it. You wouldn't be able to do anything until all the reporting was done properly. So they've worked with us and I think they'll work with us on this one as well.
Yeah, so I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up. The other thing is, as you know, and I keep bringing up the conversion, but the conversion just haunts me. So far, we've been very lucky. The only thing that kind of worried me today was we were able to pull as much of the ENCODE reports as we needed to because of, of course, in '23, '24, we all, the NPR had, was using ENCODE. So a lot of, we have a couple of months of stuff that we're kind of struggling to come up with. But as of right now, we have not had to use or pay for ENCODE. And that has been our goal from the very beginning. It's very hard. And that's why when people say, well, you know, Fund View, can we go back? When your data is in a particular module or software, you don't really want to be leaving that software because all of the history and everything is in that software. And so we really, and I want to thank, you know, Eddie Peacock, Amanda, everybody has been helping so much with getting all of this stuff prepared. I am very proud of the fact that with the director's help, we even had Donna come in to help with minutes. I mean, this really, there's this game, and as a matter of fact, when we were interviewing her, there's this game called Red Rover, Red Rover. I don't know if you all are familiar with Red Rover, Red Rover. Okay, well, that's where we are right now, I feel, as a city. I know that for us, I think at City Hall, we pretty much have Red Rover, Red Rover. Come on over, we lock arms and we're moving forward. We would not be where we are with the '23, '24 audit without everybody's help. And that includes residents like Donna and JoJo. We even had, I had somebody bring me lunch because they knew that I was working late. And they literally brought, I said, I can't, I need to eat, but I don't want to leave because they're coming in on Monday. And so they brought me lunch. Another, I mean, all of these little things. Somebody brought us, Misty Ballard brought us brownies. And I love chocolate, love chocolate. And those brownies were amazing. And that, those brownies got me through to eight o'clock at night. And so when I really say that, you know, it takes a village sometimes to do things, I just really want you all to know that we are doing everything we possibly can to meet that March deadline. And the only thing I can say is continue to ask for patience. I do consult with Eddie Peacock and we work very well with the auditors. We follow what they want, what they tell us they need because we want to get to that finish line. And so I just, I wanted to share that with you. We've ENCODE, that's forty-something thousand dollars that we're, that we're saving right now. That was, we didn't put in the budget because I said, we're not going to use it. We're not going to use it. We're not using ClearGov, which is another ten thousand, three hundred dollars a month, a year that was being spent. We cut that off. I have the documentation. We don't have to pay it again this year. We cut water worth and they agreed. I got the email, it was on Monday, the day of the auditors, confirming that they're not going to force us to pay the seven thousand dollars that was agreed upon from the previous year. So we are cutting as much as we can. HDL Companies, that's another company that we don't longer have as a consultant because those are programs that I've been here for six, seven, eight months that we haven't used besides ENCODE because we need them for the audits. But those are programs that we haven't been using and they weren't used last year.
And that's what I was going to say, and some of them, they've never been used the way it's designed to be used. So there's no reason to pay them. So, but the one thing, caveat is if we get stuck with ENCODE and we got to have those reports, it's an expense. So it's, right now, she's being able to dodge that from, dodge them, keep them off, away from that idea. But who knows what the future holds? Right now, there's every chance that we can make it through it without having to pay out any money, but who knows?
Right now, just, we are, I want, I want the citizens to know that, and this goes with Dennis and even with the, with the directors, everybody's very frugal with the money. You know, we understand that it's taxpayers' money. It's, we are custodians of the funds to provide services. And so I just really want for everybody to know that, that when we notice something, does it need to get done? We're doing our best. And we've been very blessed that some of these companies that have said, we, we don't have to pay them. And so I just really wanted, I wanted to let you know that. Those were contracts that were signed before I, before I came onboard. I didn't, I did not sign any of those contracts. Those were the agreements that were made prior. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Just thinking, she said it takes a village. It does not take a village, it takes a resort. Oh. Okay, city manager update, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, just some updates where we're at. This is the month that TechSOT should award, some would refer to as LEP, but it's basically an award, to, to award the contract for the FM 2483 Sidewalk Project. So we'll, we have not been notified of it, but they did say this is the month it should go out. And, and we'll have a company onboard. The '24 audit went, as you know, went well the other day, Monday. There were a lot of discussions, a lot of things being collected up and get, and forwarded to the auditors. It was nice having them on site. We were asked, we were able to ask a lot of questions and get some discussions that we probably wouldn't have otherwise gotten a quick answer to. But we were able to have a meeting with the auditors on the fiscal year '19 and '20. If you remember, those are two audits that's still out there lingering. The request for council was see if they'll make a recommendation on how to best handle it. They are probably going to steer clear of that. But they, what they will do is, as I understand it, at this point in time, they will provide options for council. And ultimately, it's going to be your all's decision on what you decide to do. What I did do though is I shared with them the aging accounts receivable, I think it was Dorothy had brought to me first, about some of the stuff that's in the building. Then we're over a half a million dollars on it. I showed him the, back in May, I shared with you all of last year, some of the concerns I have on the cash flow. When you see cash flow, 1.8, 1.8, drops to 1.6, next year it comes back to 1.8. And you still have the, you have more water consumed and purchased. Those, that kind of tells you there's something that's not right. Now, he shared, he being Louis, shared with us that there's a chance that, and he's not sure yet because he just got the form and the, the information Monday. And we're not going to interrupt what we're doing now. We're going to stick with the audits, get them knocked out. But this is something that we, I said, we need to close this chapter, one way or another. And he gave some things along the lines that, you know, we don't know what criteria they use, that being the prior auditors. So that's something to look at. We've got that audit, so it's not a problem. We'll also, we don't know really what happened. And they're going to go ahead and help us explore all that before they give you the answer. As far as the options you have. Because they have to have a better understanding than what they have today. But again, I didn't want to disrupt the cart, the apple cart right now. Let's get what's before us. Because that opens doors to grants and what have you. And then they'll come back and look at the '19 and '20 and get that information council's looking for.
It's a half a million, but just to interject a little bit. I did go back and look at the last audit that was done by Lot Vernon, which was 2018.
I did too.
Okay, and it was about 200 to 25 in the water fund for a receivable, which at that time was about a month's worth of billing. Because remember, we're coming off of August and September, high consumption months. So of the half a million, I think at least 200, 250 is a baseline receivable that we keep on our books at any given time where we bill before the customer pays.
Which is customary for, for any city. They're always going to have that.
But I'm saying it's a half a million dollars that we're talking about. But in the scheme of things, if there are some issues, it might only be in the 300 range that would be an issue.
Definitely. What's, every, every city has those accounts receivable. That's, that's part of your financial statements. But at the same time, this is one where we, cash flow is one thing you do look at. And, and they know the other auditors, they can reach out to them. That's pretty much an agreement among auditors. They can always go back and talk to Lot Vernon and get more information about that. So the good news is they're aware of it. They've been provided that information. They're going to stay on track where we're at. But they are going to go back and look at it. And they, they felt they were agreeable to that point. They didn't say, yes, we'll do it. But they said they're more likely to just give you some options. So it's coming, I just don't know when. But get the stuff and force out of the way. But it would hopefully put that to rest. All right, the next thing is debris removal. You've already heard about it. Things are moving well. I've given you everything I, and the staff has done a splendid job. Marina contract has been executed, the one we brought to last meeting. It's been executed and the work is scheduled to begin again in December. We're working with Corps of Engineers to get Clovis Park lease renewed. And we're having a discussion with Corps of Engineer on not only that, but on all Corps of Engineer property. We're having a meeting tomorrow with them. They are, to their credit, they're sticking to, this is what's required. And we're going to try to get everything in line the way they were asking for it. And so we're also going to take... I don't have the answer. I don't know the answer to that. Oh, you don't? I, because one float, D and E is the two floats we need to do it, refloat on, I guess. And I couldn't tell you how long it takes. I couldn't tell you. I don't know. I'll have, I can have Ronnie reach out and give me something to kind of put on the refloat process. I don't think they've ever done, have you ever done that here? I don't know.
Oh, yeah, we've done it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So you all may know, I don't know the answer. Oh, so it's not a hole, okay. Probably wouldn't take how long? There you go. We won't, whoop. Yeah, we won't make the winter time because remember, we're asking for everybody to kind of hold all the cash on the big projects until after the audits are in. And then council's going to start hearing, you know, they'll make their priorities based off staff recommendations and their own decision-making. But that's one of the top, in fact, Ronnie and I were talking about today. As soon as that's done, and that's one of the, that's the first thing he brings forward because it may take a couple of months to get it done. And remember, we got two. We may not be able to afford it all in one budget year. Maybe we can, I don't know. But we'll bring those once we know what's in the bucket of money that we have to work with.
And then when you meet with the Corps, are you going to get their permission for us to fix Ronnie's office? Because you said that was...
They've given us, what did they give you permission for on, so far? Tomorrow, she's going to be here tomorrow. Okay, so we'll have that. The first thing is, we had the contract. We need to make sure that they were okay before we executed a contract that they're going to allow us to do those repairs.
Right.
We got that. We could go guessing. And then, so that's been done. But we have other things that they're looking at that in the past, it may have not have been done. For example, a little pump out here. What is it, Steven? It's probably been there for, what, years, decades, longer? So they're by the book, we're going to get it where it needs to be. And she's going to be coming here tomorrow to talk with staff. We got them all coming together. But I'm also going to ask C, and we'll make sure this is part of our discussion, is I'd like to have that, start that discussion about debris removal with them as well, because they're, they are critical to certain aspects of the city's safety. So we'll have that as well. They probably won't have much other than hear us out, and then they'll have to go back, because remember, Fort Worth's the one that's going to guide their, their work product. We have a new city secretary, as you know, you have all met her, and that's really good, she's...
Her name's Kelly, and I cannot pronounce her last name.
Marililo.
Kelly Marililo.
Okay, and then I was talking, you know, we talked about this months ago, last year, that we need to get these revenue expense reports more online, we heard someone mention that tonight. Those things, I think, knowing full well what we're going to do is put a disclaimer, it's unaudited and subject to corrections by staff prior to the final audit. Some type of wording for a disclaimer, but we can start putting those on there this month, and that way, we can, we'll create it, and it'll be month to month, as well as, once we get the format settled for the investment reports, those will also be brought to council. Once you all have it, we'll be able to improve it, we'll be able to move that to the website as well. That's all I have for tonight.
What's that?
I think we're to a point, though, even though it may not be exact, but as long as that disclaimer's there, because there's always going to be adjustments in revenue expenses till we get it exactly where it belongs, and...
And there's still one change that needs to be made in the current budget, that council approved on September 29th. We picked option A or whatever, option one, which had the twenty-five thousand from garbage dumpster removed, and that was going to help pay for the hundred and twenty thousand reconciliation, so revenue equals expenses, and that twenty-five is still in the current budget.
See, we were talking about that.
Yeah, so we just...
She's spawled up.
Especially before we start making new amendments, let's get that budget right, because that's our adopted budget.
I understand, and they are, in fact, we had to discuss it in today, but there's priorities on everything right now, the auditors, whatever they ask for, we're trying to get that to them.
Of course, of course.
But yeah.
I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
And that's it, thank you, Mayor Counsel.
Okay, we do have a couple brief items we need to discuss in executive session this evening, so council will go real quick around the room, parting shot for our residents. Dorothy, anything to add?
Thanks for coming, thanks for all your comments, hang in there with us. Thanks to Mary for getting all these auditors happy, and, and all the staff, yes, thank you. And I'm going to, we'll all breathe a little easier when those are behind us.
Bruce, anything, sir?
No.
Roxanne.
I'll just say, thanks for coming, but also thank you to all the staff, and welcome, Kelly, we hope you love it here, fly, just fly, little bird.
In the resort.
Your last name means little bird.
Even anything, sir?
That's why I said that.
Just ditto everything that everyone said, and I thank you guys for being patient with us as a council and with the city hall, just everything, it's, everybody's doing the best they can, and it's, we're growing, doing good things, so just be patient.
Sam.
It's amazing what the staff has accomplished, and I want to congratulate Dennis on his new hire, because she is a very capable young lady.
Okay, thank you all. So the business end, City Council's now going to join into an executive session for discussion of personal matters pursuant to Section 551074 of the Texas Government Code, and discussion of real property, Section 551072 of the Texas Government Code voluntary annexation. So residents, thank you much. If you're leaving, be safe, and then enjoy the rest of your evening.